Thank you for joining us. Please rise at the lodge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a quick roll call, please?
Mrs. Talby.
Here.
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Detsel.
Here.
Mr. Heather.
Here.
Our mission statement is the Northwest Local School District will create a responsive learning community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along a pathway to success. And we would need a motion in a second to approve our agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
So we have three presentations tonight. We're going to start with John Graff, the superintendent of Butler Tech, who's going to give us an overview of the great things that are happening at Butler Tech.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you, community members, for being here. I'm assuming everybody's here for the Butler Tech presentation, right? All right, well, I'll try to condense my 75-minute presentation to about seven or eight minutes at the most. Mr. Detsel, thank you for the invitation. Board members, community members, thank you for indulging me for a few minutes to give a few minutes of an update about things that are happening at Butler Tech. Just as you read, President Talby, the mission statement about making sure that students are challenged and that we're creating all of these pathways, this partnership that we have with Northwest Local Schools and Butler Tech is flourishing. So I believe I have the clicker, and so I'll go through these really quick. Part of the reason why we're endeavoring in many of the campuses that you'll see that we're adding over the next several years is we see the growth in aviation, manufacturing, healthcare, and in IT. Those are our strongest suits of workplace demand that we see in the Southwest region, and we have a number of partners that we work with in order to endeavor in those particular programs. We, our aviation program, we just were approved through the FAA to receive airframe and power certification, which is a significant step forward for our aviation campus. These are high school students that will be earning airframe and power in their three high school years, which we're changing to a sophomore, junior, senior pathway due to the intensity of the programs. Manufacturing, before I jump into that, just to give you a quick rundown, campus students, when I say campus students, Northwest local students at Butler Tech campuses. You can see that your growth trajectory continues to be good. The growth, although dipped in the first couple of years in fiscal year 21, '22, that was during the pandemic, and obviously those years fluctuated a little bit. But we have almost just over 200 students in the fiscal year '24. We're looking at continued growth. We actually have a number of students that attend the bioscience campus, a large number, a large percentage of students, I don't have the exact percentage, but many students from Colrain and Northwest schools attend our bioscience campus. I know sometimes distance tends to be a factor, but we've not seen that specifically at our bioscience campus, which is probably the furthest for many of our Northwest Local School District students. We title satellite programs as programs that we have here at Northwest and Colrain, and you can see that the growth continues to be very, very good as well. Fiscal year '22, again, that was another pandemic year, but we see that we have almost 436 FTEs. And what I mean by full-time equivalent is, is that if a student has one period a day of a Butler Tech class, it would take one, it would take seven of those students in a seven-period day to equal one FTE in this number. So you can almost multiply that, sometimes by seven, sometimes by eight, depending upon the number of periods there are during the school day. So we're serving literally thousands of Northwest Local School District students.
And John, part of that number is you're also in our middle schools.
Yes, yes. We also have middle school programs and have had for a number of years, and do quite well at career-based interventions and the like. This is a breakdown by Colrain and Northwest by building, and the numbers prove to be very similar to what we've estimated in previous years. One of the changes that we've been making at our Butler Tech campuses and much of our program is based off of some of this information from the Office of Workforce Transformation, and this is quite an alarming statistic, that 47% of the jobs are going to be phased out due to technological advances in the coming years, and that 65% of high school students are predicted to work in jobs that don't yet exist. And so for us to be able to identify what those skill sets are, we know that sometimes a certification, airframe and power, we need to diversify the skills that they have because of the trajectory of what they will be doing in the future, that the job titles of today are not necessarily are what the job titles are of the future. And the growth of companies that we see, it's estimated by 2027 that the companies listed on the S&amp;P 500 have yet to be established. Now, that's a couple of years old, but it's just to give you an indication of just how the rapid pace of growth and the skill sets that are necessary for the advanced workforce is coming to fruition. Here you see a picture of what is our aviation campus. This is where airframe and power, students will also be able to, we're partnering with a pilot school for students to obtain their pilot's license, as well as avionics. Again, these are high school programs, but we intend to add adult education programs as well. This was partially funded, multiple sources. City of Middletown gave money to this program. The Butler County Commissioners provided money for this program, as well as Jobs Ohio. We are starting construction, crossing my fingers, sometime in November. That will be almost a $15 million building expansion. Additionally, we're adding another 30,000 square feet to our bioscience campus. You can see the gray area with the red in the middle, or will all be in addition to this particular campus. Healthcare programs continues to be a very strong and vital part of our programming. We initiated an LPN program at the high school level. We are also in conversations with Miami University about creating a Bachelor of Science in Nursing, beginning in a three-year pathway for high school students, of which Northwest and Colrain students will have ample access to as well. Lastly, and the one that I'm most excited about, is a partnership with Miami University. Miami University and Butler Tech, along with the Butler County Commissioners and a number of other funding sources, purchased a 300,000-square-foot facility, which is the former Champion Paper Company headquarters in downtown Hamilton, which is directly adjacent to Miami University Hamilton. Students will matriculate to that campus in their third year of their pathways, but we are also inviting all of our satellite programs, which would include Northwest and Colrain programs, that if they have an interest in advanced manufacturing, IT, mechatronics, robotics, automation, welding, machining, these students will be able to attend these campuses. The classrooms, which is what's most remarkable about this, we've talked about blurring the lines. These lab spaces will have high school students, undergrads, graduate students, and research and development professors from the College of Elm and Oxford, all in the same lab, working on the same projects. We know that that's the way businesses work. We know that sometimes the machinist on the floor knows the machining aspect, and the engineers need to do the design and have that cohabitated relationship. And so we're excited about this partnership with Miami University at, one, providing college credit courses for students to finish their degree if they desire to, in engineering technology through, or their engineering program through Miami University, or go directly to the workforce and/or into the military. Here you can see a picture of just some of the renderings that we've worked with Miami University on. We will begin construction on that in the spring of 2025. And the reality, and this is closer to the highlights of really what I wanted to share with you, is that we're seeing this trend of collision points where business, education, government, and the public come together to do redesigns of high schools, redesigns of the student experience, and hands-on learning. And what we're seeing from our results aspect is quite astounding. We have what's called a technical skill attainment. It's an assessment that students take at the end of their coursework. The state standard is 70%. Our rate of passage is 86.7, one of the highest in the state of Ohio. Post-program placement, that students either going into post-secondary, meaning college and university, or to an adult education campus, directly to the work or military, is at 96.2%. 96.2% of students have a job or are going on to get additional learning or headed off into the military. So we've also added, through our legislative advocacy, and I know Mr. Detsel has been a part of that for a number of years, high school students can now access adult education campuses at Butler Tech free of charge. Just like they have access to college credit plus courses, we knew that this idea that if students wanted to get their HVAC and refrigeration certification, they wanted to get an industrial maintenance certification, which both of those programs do not exist in our high school programs, students can access those programs now at our adult education campuses for free, just as they do their college courses. You know, we talk about the excitement that's happening in education in general and with the expansion of our campuses. We've had tremendous support from many, many stakeholders. Over the past two years, we've raised almost $24.5 million of external sources to build these campuses. So we're reinvesting in programs, reinvesting in equipment. It is not cheap to put in, put into place the labs that we're talking about. We just added a welding lab at our Fairfield Township campus at the cost of $2.2 million for one lab. So, but the return on investment for students is tremendous. Lastly, I'll mention our Career Connect website, which is something that we invested in over the past six to eight months. It's an opportunity for teachers, both Butler Tech and non-Butler Tech teachers, to connect with businesses, for businesses to connect with students, for students to garner internships, co-ops, and job postings. You can go to our Butler Tech website and click on Career Connect. Any student and any teacher that's part of our joint vocational school district, which includes Northwest and Colrain, can access that website. If there's a Colrain teacher that wants to do a project with a business and they need to find a partner, we'll help them find a partner, regardless of whether it's a Butler Tech teacher or if it's a Butler Tech student. We know that the demand for the future of our jobs and the skill sets that they're going to need goes well beyond what's at capacity for Butler Tech to handle. So we're excited about the future, very, very happy that we have our partnership with Northwest Colrain. Special thank you to Darrell. I've worked with him for the past several years. He does a great job of advocating for students, whether they're in a Butler Tech program or whether they're at Northwest Local Schools. Yes, sir.
What about a plumbing program?
So we work with a lot of union shops, both customized training, we've been exploring electrical trades as well. Plumbing is not something that we've had a lot of interest in from the high school perspective, but if we have union shops that have an interest in doing co-ops and internships, we would certainly welcome the opportunity. One of the areas that we lack, because we have a lot of programs, plumbing is one. The other one that we lack, we get some skill set in our construction trades program, but electric and electrical trades is continuing to grow, and we're working to try to diversify that expansion as well. But, you know, the term "blue collar" jobs is, I don't want to say outdated, but these are highly technical skills, whether it's electrical, plumbing, construction. They have to have a technical expertise, but plumbing is one that we don't have right now.
Those guys make big plumbing.
Yes, they do. Yes, they do. Our, most of our students are getting multiple job offers before they leave high school. We usually tell them, don't take the first offer. We haven't had to hire an agent for them yet, but some of them may, at some point in time, have to.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sticking with the Butler Tech theme, we actually have one of the programs here to give an update. So Tara Mitchell is going to come up and share for our healthcare sciences program.
So like you said, my name is Tara Mitchell. I'm very lucky to be the healthcare science teacher here at Northwest Local School District. My kids went to Fairfield, so I love my new gear, by the way. I brought two of my juniors with me, Olivia Lighthall and Reagan Lloyd. They're going to talk in a minute a little bit about what they do, but just an update on our seniors. We have 12 of 19 seniors placed in jobs currently that are co-op-ing for us. We are very blessed in the budgets that we have to have gotten all new equipment for our program here at Northwest and Colrain. We got new desks, we got new mannequins, whole new phlebotomy lab and all of that, so I'm quite excited for that. And they're doing really great, so I'll let them have it. Thank you.
She previously introduced us, but I'm Reagan.
And I'm Liv.
And we are so excited to have the opportunity to be in the healthcare program this year. We get to take adult and college-level classes, which is a very big opportunity that most people don't really get. We get to learn patient-centered care and medical terminology, and we also get to be in a blood drive on Friday and watch and kind of see what the seniors are doing, and I think it's a very good opportunity.
Yeah, so another thing that we participate in is called HOSA, and it's basically just a competition that we can travel to, to compete against other healthcare programs and get to showcase all of our skills that we've learned in class. And we recently completed a successful fundraiser so that we, as students, don't have to pay to travel, and it covers the costs of the events that we go to. So some things we get to showcase are patient care, CPR, first aid, and even stop the bleed.
I also wanted to elaborate. We also get to get our phlebotomy and our nursing assistant certifications, which is also really good for future jobs. And that's it. We also...
We do have some flyers for the blood drive on Friday at Colrain High School at the Career Center all day long, if anybody would like to come. We currently, in this area, do have a very big shortage of blood, so if you want to come, we have some. Thank you, guys.
Girls, where, what are your guys' hopes for the future? Do you want to stay in the medical field?
Yeah, I want to be an ultrasound tech for pregnancy, so I'm heading in like the right track right now.
Yeah, I agree. I definitely want to stay in the medical field. I'm not exactly sure what, but probably something in ultrasound or labor and delivery.
Awesome. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, girls.
Ladies, will you all join me outside for a photo? And your families, if you all, if you want to stay, you're welcome to. If you want to leave, this is a perfect time. You're welcome to stay.
Thank you, again.
Thank you.
All right, and next we have our third presentation. We have two of our transportation administrators here, Brian Redden and Tanya, who are, Henry are going, who are going to go over some updates from our transportation department.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being here, board members, administrators, public, and bus drivers. They must like us. For those that do not know me, my name is Brian Redden. I'm an assistant supervisor at transportation. We'll go into a routing overview. Typically, there are three tiers per route, AM, three tiers PM for every route. There are a few that may have two or one. Each tier has a specific time and mileage or distance. There are four, there's four midday transitions routes. There are seven special needs, or I'm sorry, there are seven preschool routes, and there are four midday shuttles that go from Northwest High School to Colrain High School, and then from Colrain High School to Northwest High School. That's for the Butler Tech vocational program. The routes consist of 44 regular education routes, that would be Northwest. They're a total of 186 tiers. There are 35 parochial routes with a total of 70 tiers. There are 13 sped routes, special education routes, with a total of 78 tiers. There's seven van routes, total of 24 tiers, and then we have about 15 to 20 special education students that go to seven various campuses off-site, and they are transported by outside source, on-time meddy, and VCM. The total students and miles per day that we transport, the total, that's every student that we transport, is roughly 4,149 students, and I'm sorry, 4,149 miles, and a total of 5,111 students. And the breakdown is follows. Northwest education regular routes is 1,659 miles per day and 3,445 students per day. The special education routes are 647 miles and 248 students. The non-pub route schools, such as St. James, St. Eyes, would be 1,078 miles and about 1,342 students. And then we have 765 miles covered by seven vans and a total of 61 students. Individual routing, just since June, this would be the sped students that we've received, there's about 280 students. That's just since June. Since August 19th, about 387 students that we've had that route, and today that number has actually increased almost to 400. The payment-in-lie-uh process consists of, it's a district process of, it's a resolution. It's students that are impractical and, that are considered impractical. Impractical would be due to miles, distance, the number of students that we would transport. The offer, we offer a parent in lieu of, it affects families, and with the offer and payment lieu of, there's currently 283 students this year. Last year, the number was 219. Parents accept the payment in lieu of, and then the check is made to them. There are six reasons why. Our department consists of one supervisor, Yolanda Palmer, two assistant supervisors, myself and Tanya Henry, and one office personnel, Michelle Dean. Tanya can talk about the staffing, or Susan can talk about the staffing.
Thank you, Brian. And as I began to talk about staffing, I would be remiss not to say thank you to all of our drivers behind me, who are here to support and transport our students every day. So by the numbers, yes. So by the numbers, we currently have 57 bus routes along with 53 drivers, and we have three guaranteed sub-drivers. One of our challenges in the current moment and a huge opportunity for us is to increase the number of substitute bus drivers that we need in our district. We currently are aiming to get that number from three to 10.
What were those numbers last year at this time?
So we had more substitutes. So we were probably sitting at about eight subs at this point last year. The actual routes were similar.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. So in terms of training that our bus drivers receive, you can tell that they are well-credentialed. They, after they are hired, they go through many, many, many hours of getting certified and endorsed in a variety of different content areas. We've been recruiting for drivers throughout the summer and into the fall with targeted online advertising, and you can see on the slide, the data that, in terms of reach of those recruiting ads. We actually had 22 folks come into our hiring fairs who wanted to drive a bus, and you may say, well, where are those folks? So the hiring process is somewhat complex for our bus drivers and van drivers as well. So like any other employee, they are required to complete a background check, which can take up to 30 days. In addition, and we all want this, due to the safety of transporting our students, our drivers are required to also pass drug screens and physicals, and then they also have to get a temporary CDL. All of this takes time, obviously, and then they enter the CDL training process. Here now, to talk more about employees and where we are in terms of that status, is Tanya Henry.
Hi, guys. So to add a little bit more to the training, we lose most of our candidates during the temporary, getting their temporary CDL. Most of them give up, walk away, because it's four parts. It's the same thing a truck driver would have to go through, same testing, but ours gets added a school bus and a passenger test on top of it.
Is that paid training, Tanya?
No, not for their temps. That's where we are streamlining it a little bit. We never, when they would come in, do their interview, all that, I'd say, okay, well, now you need to go get your temps. Call me when you get your temps, and I'll process your paperwork. Now we are going, starting as of last week, we're telling new candidates, we are actually bringing that in-house. We are going to have a class to help them get through their temps, make them feel a little bit more, I've got the job, you know, kind of thing. So, and I'll tell you the numbers on that in a minute, but once they get their temps, their drug screen, their background check, that could be two, three weeks, sometimes four weeks, by the time all that goes through. So as of right now, as of today, we have fully certified drivers, five drivers in training, all going through the hiring process. So hopefully, within the next two weeks, we will get them for drivers who already have all the qualifications, have their certifications, everything on the road. Tomorrow, we have interviews with two fully certified drivers and one more driver in training. So as of right now, I have 11 people going through the process at this minute. That's good, good news. Thought they'd be excited. They haven't heard them numbers yet. So that's where we're at at this point. We are working day and night trying to get these people in here. I'm calling people on weekends. They're pretty shocked that they get called and get so excited, like, oh, okay, sure. So they're coming in, we want to get this going. So with the support of everybody in the district helping streamline it, it's made, already in just one week, has made such a huge difference, getting these people in the door. Back to Brian.
So driver shortage creates route cancellations. Tanya and I and Yolanda work very hard not to cancel a route. I mean, we sleep on this, we eat it, sleep it, we worry about it. So comparison data, from 2020, 21, 21, 22 school year, we canceled 630 routes. The following year, it was really, really painful. It was 921 routes. Last year, we actually had 102. This year, if we don't get drivers in, we're actually almost halfway there, and we're not even at the end of our first quarter yet. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Why cancellations happen? Driver shortage is due to different circumstances. It's a national shortage. I mean, it's a national problem. It's not just us. We have contracted drivers out on medical leave, and we have a lack of sub-drivers. Actually, the three of us in the office are subs. The process for determining canceled routes, like I said before, Tanya and I do, we come in very early in the morning. Tanya's here at four-thirty, I'm here at four-forty-five, every day, for the past three years, we've done this. We don't like to cancel, but we will never cancel the same route in the same week. We cancel routes if we have a lot of call-ins. The night before, we typically, or maybe even the week, we have a blue sheet the driver's hand in, lets us know ahead of time that we're going to face a deficit that day. We will try our best the night before to actually use that data and work it out before we go to sleep, but the next morning, we come in at four-thirty, five o'clock, and we have two or three calls. So, we have to cancel routes. We try to keep the driver in the same location at all times, and we try not to cancel multiple schools, the same school, more than one, with one more route. So, such as Struble, we would never cancel two Struble routes in a day. We also look to see if a route can be split up between multiple buses, and it's about student safety, we do not overload buses, and we make sure it's efficient enough that parents don't have to worry, and schools aren't worried, and drivers can get on to their next route. Strategies to keep minimal, minimize the cancellations are, we double-run. An example is, today, we had one bus that actually ran to Pleasant Run Middle School in the afternoon. That driver would go in, run his route, and go back, and actually pick up another route, and take them home. And typically, we do have a minor delay in getting to that route home, but we tried to get the message out as soon as possible. We combine routes, that means we split, split a route up, maybe between multiple buses. It could be one bus, it could be three. And we also collapsed a route this year. It was bus route twelve. It was a Struble and a White Oak bus, and we were able to actually separate that, the students out, and put the students on other buses within their same route area. So, we didn't just make them drive all over town, they're actually going past these stops. For the communication, this will be Lindsay's part. Thank you, Lindsay.
Hello, everyone. For those that don't know who I am, I'm Lindsay Creasy, and I'm the PR person for the school district, and, I click. And I always say that there are three things that have to be in place in order to have efficient communication. One of those is the system that you have in place. The other is data management, and also a proper way to have data collection. And today, I'm going to be talking to you all about the systems that we currently have. In June of this year, we sunsetted a program, our communications program called E-School View, and we started a new program called Aptigee. And Aptigee is our website, our mobile app, as well as our communication system. During the time that we were looking for a system, we spent two years really kind of going through a system, because we recognized that there were some glitches and problems that we had with our old communication system. And so, Matt and I really vetted a new system, looking at ways to find a company that really met our communication needs. And so, we have landed on Aptigee. We believe it's a great program that we currently have. Some of the things that make it great is that it works well with Dazzle, as well as TransFinder, and those are the two communications programs that technology uses to pull data, and also the program that transportation currently uses. And our old system wasn't really able to do that well. The other thing that makes Aptigee a great program is that it allows us to be able to share messages with specific riders of our own specific buses. So, last year, when we had a bus cancellation, we had to send a communication out to the whole school, at five o'clock in the morning, mainly because we weren't able to drill down effectively, and to pick riders from specific buses to send communication to, and this new system allows us to do that. The other thing is that it also has short code, and that means that we can send a longer message. So, we were limited to a hundred and eighty characters last year in text, and so now we can send out a text that's up to three hundred and twenty characters. And there's also less blockage with a short code, meaning, because wireless companies accept short code, it won't block the message. So, in a longer code, with the old system that we had, a message may not necessarily show up, just because their carrier wouldn't send it through to their phone. And so, Matt is now going to come and talk about data management, and also data collection.
Okay, I want to try to keep this non-technical. So, like Lindsay said, we use Aptigee, data management for data collection. Our communication system gathers data from five different sources. Two of the five are actually our student information system and TransFinder. So, student information system houses parent contact information, and then TransFinder houses the bus information. So, what we have to do with these data sources, we have to combine them both, link them together, so it creates one big data source, so we're able to do the filtering. Each morning, we can select the bus number, and it calls those families. So, now, that's, that has been working really well, with this new system. Now, that's what the Northwest Local School kids. With the non-public schools, we have to do a totally different process. Basically, since we do not own the public school contact information, we don't know who attends there, we have to gather that information from the schools, as well as the family names, the student names, phone numbers, email addresses. So, we rely on them to send us the information. So, so this, when we do request this over the summer, we do request them to send us this data over, like templates, like spreadsheets. So, typically, it's got to be formatted the same way, and it doesn't always come formatted the way we like it, but we still have to somehow manipulate it, format it, and get it into our system. So, it's a, creates, and that, when we have that in place, does create like a separate set of call lists for, it's almost like a separate school district in our system. So, we have us, and we have some non-public schools. So, I mean, while working this data from multiple sources, it isn't always perfect. However, we're able to really narrow down the problem, resolve it in a quickly manner.
Along with that system, we also have a, a system that's called StopFinder. It's available through the TransFinder Corporation, and it works in conjunction with RouteFinder. StopFinder is a parent application that they can receive, and it will actually, you can add it to your phone, and you can actually track your student, or your child. It says, it is helpful when, you know, when you're, when a bus is running late or early, when we actually combine a route, or if we actually double-run, it'll let you know the time and location. StopFinder is available to all parents, grandparents, any guardian, et cetera. As long as we have the updated email and phone number, we can actually get the message An email that we have in the system, we can actually go ahead and send a huge group of, of requests, or actually invites out. And when the parent receives the invite, they actually log in, create their own password, and they actually can be linked to the RouteFinder system. Says, use, use this app, using this app is the best way that we can, that you can track The process of communication goes as is, as is. When a route is canceled in the morning, it's something Tanya and I do the night before we try. It's based on the number of absences that have been given to us in advance, the additional call-offs that we have received in the morning when we get into the office. We determine how many routes we have to cancel. We communicate this with, with the PR person at Northwest Local School District, which would be Lindsay. And a message is created using Aptigee, and a message is sent to parents via email and When a route is maybe early, late, combined, a message will be sent out in Aptigee, and it'll be sent out to the parents via email and text. If a route is split between multiple buses, a message will be sent out to the schools and parents, and notified by email and text. The Stop app will not work when we use multiple buses with a student. It's just impossible to send that individual student out, and you create so many messages, it would just be too time-consuming. So, we actually try to send out, and we are getting better, and we've actually have systems in place now. The non-public communication, a little more complicated, like Matt was saying, we don't have, sometimes we don't have their emails, we don't have phone numbers, so we can't get that information out. So, in the morning, as, as we're canceling other routes, we will actually reach out personally to the parochial schools. I call them personally, I call the principal of the, of the actual building, and I will send an email, and I send it out to multiple people in our, in our school district, too. Chris will get them, and that way, everybody's on board of what's going on. If somebody doesn't get it, then there's some way of letting them know. Last-minute cancellations in route, early arrivals, we also communicate that via text and email, and a phone call to the schools. We actually have to, we want to reach out to the schools and let them know, especially if we're combining routes. They want to know what student to put on what bus, so the drivers that are driving are on their way to drop them students off, and not driving all across the country to unload a student. But the system has to, we have to have com, you know, actual, we have to actually have updated information, and that's what we're working on, we are working on it. Communication, who do we call? We call any Northwest school building that's in our, our district itself. We would reach out to the schools and let them know what's going on. We'd let them know if there, if students are arriving late, if they're actually arriving early, if we're splitting a route, if the, basically, if, if the driver, you know, at the last minute had, had an issue, we would let the schools know, and let them know who is actually helping out with that route. They can always, parents and, and schools can actually call the Transportation Department. We are actually taking care of that, too. We're trying to get somebody to just stay man the phones early in the morning, because when three of us are out driving along with everybody else, we cannot answer our phones, and I know parents get frustrated with that. And route cancellations will be available on each independent, each independent schools, our schools' websites, so they can actually see the updated information. And I think it went live, or it will be going live today. Is that correct?
Also on the district page.
And it'll be on the district own page also.
What about Facebook and Twitter?
That's a question for Lindsay.
Why not use the transportation Twitter page and Facebook page?
There has been conversation around that happening. At this point in time, there, it's just been conversation. There are things to think of, though, that kind of come to mind when thinking of it. So, a lot of news stories or news agencies follow Twitter pages in order to have news stories around it, and so, it's a, we would directly be putting information in the news' hands for news stories.
And the parents.
And parents, too. So, one of the things that we have done to try to make it as easy as possible, is here on the very front page of our website. It'll be, if you'll see where that arrow is, where it says bus information, it will be there for anyone to click on. That information will be updated as soon as the information is updated, to go out to parents at that same time. And so, parents will be able to access it in the process of having a, a break where, you know, our technology department and transportation department are working on their list to make sure that everyone is receiving the information. The information will also be readily available on our public website for parents, as well as non-public people to find as well. I think social media is definitely something that is worth discussing and talking about in the conversations that I've had with transportation. It's all around their capacity to be able to manage it, and so, conversations are being had around what that could possibly look like. So, that's not a no, it's just working through what that logistics and what that would look like for them to be able to manage that with all the other communication that's going out.
Any other questions?
About that, or in general?
Anything else in general?
I think that was the end of their presentation. Is there anything in general?
I didn't want to interrupt you, if that was, if you still had more. Thank you so much, all of you, for being here. What do you think is the difference this year versus last year? Why, you know, you last year was so successful, what do you think has caused the?
Like a driver, I mean, it's what it all boils down to, it's like when people are in seats. You know, we had, we did have a little bit of subs last year, but this year, we, we have three, you know.
We had a lot of retirement.
And illness.
Yeah.
And the subs that we did have, have, all got contracted. Worked out again, so, it's just a revolving thing.
And then, the, with, you know, the, the district is pushing attendance, but it feels like if we're pushing attendance, but then we're not putting an emphasis on helping your department get people to drive, or get new drivers, or, you know, it seems like three people to try to hold a department down from inside the building while you're also driving, it feels like we should be putting people in place to be able to answer the emails, the phone calls, I don't know. Is, do you feel like you're getting enough help from administration to successfully run a whole department?
Honestly, we weren't. There was a lot of discussion in this past week to help put people in place to help us with that. And I know Michelle has been, she's been coming in at six AM to start fielding phone calls for us.
I, I appreciate that, you guys doing that, because I cannot imagine how difficult it is to try to, you know, if, if Daryl was in a classroom every day teaching, he wouldn't be able to be superintendent. It feels like it's pretty, the answer is, we need to help you guys, all of you, to be able to do your jobs, and...
Thank you, thank you.
So, whatever we can do, we want to do that, if there's things that, that we can help put in place.
Believe me, we would love to have normal hours.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, four years of ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen-hour days. Today will be a fourteen-hour day, probably sixteen-hour day by the time I get home.
And then you won't sleep, because you'll be worried about tomorrow.
Absolutely, every night. I'm pacing the floor by two o'clock. You know, it's, it's just, it's just day in and day out, and we really don't get to see our other halves, our significant others, at all. And we're too tired on the weekend to really do anything, so. I feel positive, you know, I do see people coming in, I feel positive about it, but we were feeling this in June, we had people in place, thought we were going to be sitting in our seats, got a little too excited, and, you know.
Well, obviously, you guys care, or you wouldn't be spending your evening here with us, you know, everybody.
Absolutely. These are really good people.
Yep.
We do, we do for these guys.
Yeah.
Yep.
And just to call it out, we have about forty-three drivers that, in the last month, have had three weeks of perfect attendance. So, we have drivers showing up, we just don't have the subs to backfill when we don't have them. So, there's a lot of good things happening.
And all the problems stem from their drivers. I mean, the communication, we wouldn't have to put communication out if we were running our routes on a normal basis, and we wouldn't have to worry about the communication part. I mean, we would have some, but it would be something that we could manage in-house, because we are sitting in our seats, and that's part of our job. But when we're driving seven-hour days, seven hours a day, and then trying to go in and, you know, we're always cutting and running. I mean, that's what we do. We go in at four-thirty in the morning, and I'm out, and she's out at six o'clock in the morning. And we're trying to keep one in that, one in the office, and I understand frustration from parents, I get it, I'm a parent myself. And we're trying to keep one in that, one in the office and I understand frustration from parents, I get it, I'm a parent myself. But, uh, we're, we're doing the best we can and we do everything in our power not to cancel routes. I mean, we, like I said before, we eat and sleep and drink this stuff, so.
Um, can you tell me just a little bit about, from an experience I had about how, um, if a bus is doubled up or split and then a student is thirty minutes late coming home, how does that communication work? Because the driver's busy driving, how does, does a school let parents know or what, what do you guys do to communicate that to parents?
We are trying to be really proactive, we had meetings on this in, in the recent, you know, weeks, uh, trying to be really proactive. We've had sys- system, we have systems in place now. We communicate that with Michelle. This morning, for example, we had a driver that actually on, had a medical problem. Right away, we're in tune, we, we were listening, we're listening for it and it was like, put the message out right away. Um, and then the schools, you know, there was three buses actually covering that, but the message went out that, to the school that, that, you know, we are running late and we will be there. Unfortunately, we weren't in, we don't know who, what bus got what child and, and everything else. We just knew we got them to school. And that bothers me though, we don't know exactly where the student is, but, you know, believe me, we, we try our hardest to get them to school safely.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
I think in last year, we had more time in between routes and the other drivers could help out when someone didn't show up. With them like splitting up the route or just covering it itself. Whereas this year, things are tighter and we don't have that availability of the amount of drivers to do any of that. So, that's where the cancellation's coming.
I, I think the cancellations are just unfortunate, it's just going to be the nature of the beast for transportation until something just completely changes in transportation. You know, our kids are absolute, there, there are, there are number one concern. Uh, I mean, you guys transport them forty-one hundred miles every single day safely and, you know, we can't thank you enough for that. I, I feel like the, where it breaks down is just the communication piece. I mean, I personally, I, in my job, I do a lot of operations and it seems like you have a dropout in the, in a communications person. And that's not geared at you Lindsay at all, but I think you need somebody sitting in that house that if you go, you guys don't need to be behind a wheel. I mean, w- we pay you for your knowledge to manage everything, right? You need somebody that you can go to and say, hey, sixty-six is twenty minutes behind and that person can jump on whatever system that is of the three or four or five that you have and send that out. Cause I, I feel like parents would be a lot more understanding if they just know what's going on. To have, I remember like around twenty-eighteen, Bob, you probably remember this, we had kids dropped off in the wrong neighborhood. I mean, that, can you imagine the fear in a parent that, hey, my, my kid is over wherever? I mean, that's, it, 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 these things happen, but if, I think, if, Darrell, I think we should look at putting somebody, Chris, we should have somebody in an office that if these guys do have to drive, you could just, you know, call them and say, hey, this is behind, this is behind. And then the other thing I wanted to ask, if somebody doubles a route, does their day get longer? I, I would imagine it does or does not.
No, it does not.
No. And then so if you double, is there any financial incentive? Is there some type of reward for doubling up the route?
Yeah.
It's additional, and it comes to about five bucks an hour.
I mean, cause you have to incentivize people to do extra somehow, some way. And is that in the?
It's in the contract.
Contract.
Mm-hmm.
But I just want to say thank you, you guys, we're here to listen to you. Susan, I know Susan is working her fingers in the bone to find people for you, uh, there's no question. I think our job fairs have been probably one of the most fruitful initiatives that we've done since I've been on a school board. So, you guys ever have any ideas, come do what you did tonight, share it with us so that, you know, I think, I think the board is willing to support you in any way we can.
And find solutions, so if you're up here that, you know, I can't wait to share this, your presentation with the community so that people can really see. Most people are quick to complain, but just all of the things that go into it and what you guys are doing to, to get kids to and from school.
The trip advisor position that was between two drivers needs to be put back into place because Tanya and Brian have more than enough on their plate at this, um, point. It was in place, it was in place, I'm not even sure if it was all six years? Six years and then all of a sudden it was taken and, you know, if you are supervisor, you can do that. That's a job that's given to driver, a couple of extra hours a week. I think it was two to four hours a week, but it was done by drivers. Drivers that are struggling to make, you know, eight hours some days, so. It was taken from, from the drivers, it wasn't, the drivers gave it up and said, we didn't want to do this anymore. It was taken from the drivers and put on the supervisor, so. And that's been a few years ago.
And just so you guys understand too, um, the community comes to us like, I mean, very rarely do they call and say, hey, this was the most exciting crazy thing, you know, it's always to complain about something. And then our chain of command, because we preach chain of command, is to take it to Chris and Darryl. So, it, please don't interpret that, that it's, we're tattletaling in any way. It would be unprofessional and unethical for us to come to Brian or Tanya or Yolanda directly. We're just following our chain of ma- command because that's what we preach to people when they call us. Did you take it to the building leadership? Did you take it to your union rep? Did you take it through whoever? So, please don't feel that, uh, we're just trying to do our job the way we're meant to do it.
What percentage of new hires stay throughout the whole school year typically? Do you have a data on that or?
No, but I can tell you, if one goes through all the training, usually we, we keep them.
Okay.
We've, you know, I, as a trainer for eight years before I became supervisor and out of all the people I've trained, I believe all my people are still here, but two. Technically, if we get them from ground up, you know, through their temps, all the way through training, we have them for years. Very few have just came and left. Usually, if, if anything, it's illness or retirement. Bus driving is a good portion of older people, you know, retirees, you know, that come because of the hours that are there, so.
And how long is that process from, like, if I fill out my application to where then I get to drive a bus? How, how long is that process?
Entire process from filling out your application to being on the road, driving a route, can be three or four months. Training, it is required by state that you have twelve hours on the road tra- driving to get your CDL. I wouldn't trust a driver who only had twelve hours of training. State average is thirty-two to forty hours. You are, we are only allowed to train a hundred and sixty minutes a day.
That's a DOT, that's a Department of Transportation initiative?
Yes. So, our, our OBI is typically trained from nine-thirty in the morning till eleven, eleven-thirty every day. So, that process, and it also depends on that person. We, I've had a person go through in two weeks, I've had people take three months. We average it on six weeks of behind the wheel training.
Gotcha.
So, it really depends on the person, but yeah, it's not a quick process. We tell everybody that in interviews, this is not an overnight thing. And we are streamlining the whole process to get them even in the door, which is going to be a huge difference, getting them in and ready, so.
And even if they, they do make it through all that, I mean, I, I would imagine driving a bus for somebody who's never driven a bus was probably the exact same feeling of when I drove a camper for the first time and I've got thirty-six feet of whatever behind me with, with sixty kids in it, you know.
Come on over and drive.
I know, I missed a day.
Darryl's driven, Suzie's driven.
I missed a day, I, I apologize.
Tanya tried to, she had to drive the bus and I was so scared, I didn't even push the gas.
But, but I would imagine if you take a brand-new driver that's never driven a bus, right? They can have all the car driving experience they want, that we're not, this is an apples-to-orange comparison. I, I would imagine as supervisors, you guys just don't take them and take them on like, I don't know, whatever, one of your more complicated routes like down Eagle Creek or something, I don't know, I don't even think we go down Eagle Creek anymore, do we? Is that what the, the one, do we?
As a trainer, you're driving, for a day, you're driving.
Anyway, anyway, but I mean, that's a consideration, so you're not going to take somebody brand-new and put them on a, on a very complicated route. So, then there's. Well, I mean, there's, there's a delay in delivery.
We have a, we have a routing system on a bus, just like your GPS system. They can pull it up and they can follow it turn by turn, it tells them stop by stop, your stop is in fifty feet, you know. Shows them exactly where the house is, turn left here, turn right there, do a turnaround. As long as the route sheets are corrected, then it, this computer works that way. So, yeah, we can pretty much, once you get your license, you're considered a professional driver. You know, you've had plenty of opportunity to train. Uh, with us training, they also have to go through four days of state certifications with Brandon Anis to get a state certification on top of that CDL. So, it's, it's not just a walk-in-the-door thing, it's a couple of months' process.
As an OBI, we typically will start them out in a parking lot just to get a feel for the bus. But by the time they are getting ready to go and take their CDL, we've had them on the highway at highway speeds. We've had them down, um, roads in downtown just to get them, you're going to be in those situations as a driver, so why not do it while you have someone in the bus with you, showing you, watching your corner, stuff like that. So, we will put them in situations that a normal driver would think was questionable, but they're going to be in it on their own at one point with sev- up to seventy kids behind them. So, we put them in that through training as well.
Does anyone in the AO have a CDL?
We lost a driver last week due to the route cancellation. He was a brand-new driver, he came in at six o'clock, they said, we canceled your route, here's a new route. He couldn't, he couldn't handle the fact that he didn't know where he was going and he didn't, didn't feel comfortable and turned his keys.
Well, thank you very much again, thank you for being here, appreciate your guys' time.
One of the ways that you can help communicate is the schools all have radios and we communicate with them. These guys are out on the road at six o'clock in the morning and can't do anything because they're driving. If, they have radios, but they use them also for inside the buildings. So, sometimes we get a call that says, uh, they're calling their pres- uh, principal, well, we're on radio because they switch it on and off to our channel. They need one that's dedicated to the buses in all schools. So, we can contact them and when they get ahold of them on the radio, they can tell them to alert those people in the proper way so that the, the parents know what's going on, which is what you guys want.
So, part of our process is that every building has a radio on the bus channel every morning and every afternoon. And there should be communication that they can get directly to a building. We have had to in the past, when they can't get a building, Chris and I have heard it on the radio and we've had a call, the building would get on the radio, they're asking for you. We've been pushing that very much, that every building has to have one radio on the bus channel every morning and every afternoon because that direct communication from building to bus and bus to building is important so that if a parent calls the building, they can get to the bus to make sure the kid is on the bus and if the bus is running late, they can call the building and the building can send that message out. So, that is supposed to be happening, it's not, you need to let us know specifically by building, not now. So that we, but that is something that is an expectation that every building is on that channel.
Yeah, because actually a lot of questions can, can be answered by the buildings. In TransFinder, there's a, another piece of that software called ViewFinder and the building OPs are able to type in a student name and find out all routing information for that student. And like they were talking about, they, they can communicate back and forth with the bus, so if a parent does call into the school, instead of trying to call where we've got one person sitting and, you know, I wish we could have all of them in there, but if we've got one person sitting, there's just no way, even with all of them in there, that we could handle that volume of phone calls that come in. But if we split that up through all the buildings and people call the buildings for something simple, most of the time, the building could either answer that information, whether it be routing software or they could contact the bus and find out an ETA on, on whatever location it is.
Yeah, but I, I, it seems like you got to have somebody sitting there that can communicate it.
Absolutely.
Brian and Tanya.
Those are two, those are two different things, Mark.
Sure, okay. I mean, these guys, they're, they're dealing with other things other than?
Well, but there again, the, the key to getting the department to run the way it should is to get enough drivers so that we've got drivers in seats, we've got drivers for when people have to call off or they have emergencies, uh, that they have to deal with in their own personal lives. So, we have those drivers in there, we've got our supervisors in the office, so they're working on things like WayFinder. What, no, WayFinder, which is the part of the software that runs the tablet. So, as soon as the drivers get out there and they start WayFinder, it's actually tracking where that bus is the whole time and that's what's communicating to StopFinder, which is what parents are watching to see where the bus is. If all that was working properly, if they had time to sit in there and get all that work done and get it set up the way that it should, a parent could tell exactly what time that bus is going to be at their house. But they've got to be in their seats in the office and we need drivers out here driving. We had one driver, uh, that, that really impressed me. I can remember during the interviews when she came in, she was a parent here in the district and the comment she made is, I want to be part of the solution. She said, I thought about being mad about this, but I came in, I want to be a part of the solution. She's been a great driver for us for the past year, she's back again and doing a great job. So, that's what we need people to do here in this community is be part of the solution and come in and, and help us out. We need drivers.
Thank you guys, thank you again. Nancy, student achievement?
Yeah, we're starting off to a good year with student achievement already. We'll start out with academics. And with the Northwest Local School District, there is a, uh, opportunity that's being provided to second graders at all five elementary schools. The students that are allowed to participate in this academic enrichment program are chosen by the teachers due to their motivational skills and their thinking skills. They're also chosen based on their end of first grade math and English skills. And then they also do a, give a sample of their work that is judged by the gifted and interventional specialist to see who should be in this program. The program is, it's a talent development program that is STEM-focused and the point of it is to develop higher-level learning skills. And as you'll see on this slide here, we have some students from Strubal Elementary that are brainstorming to determine what creatures and plants could survive in Mexico's Cave of Crystals. And then at Taylor Elementary, we have students that are collaborating to build the tallest paper tower. So, innovative ways for them to use their thinking skills and to problem solve, so a very excellent program for them. Next, in the Northwest Local School District, we will be using questions released from the State of Ohio test throughout the year to monitor student achievement goals to make sure they're in accordance with the district's ONE plan. We started out well with the ninth grade, uh, earlier this month, they completed the first common assessment for biology and we had seven of our students that performed terrifically on the pre-assessment. Four earned advanced ranking, ranking and three earned the accomplished rating. So, we're going to congratulate these students on their achievement. Um, and these assessments are very important for the teachers. It's a great tool for them to assess the current level of knowledge and skills before they even begin instruction. So, hopefully that will continue in that direction. Next, we'd like to go to Corrine Elementary. And Corrine would like to recognize four students, John Jordan, Brody Wade, Ava Hester and Sean Lafferty for being engaged and ready to learn. These students receive positive documentation in the public school works. So, we want to congratulate them on a great job that hopefully continues throughout the school year for them and for their classmates. Next, we will go to Corrine High School. Corrine High School senior Joan Caddell has been named the Co-op Student of the Month for her, her hard work, outstanding customer service and her enthusiasm. and her enthusiasm while working the drive-through window at the Cincinnati, Ohio Police Federation Credit Union. She is gaining valuable career experience and already making her, a name for herself in the business world. So we congratulate her on that fine accomplishment. Next, we will move to Transitions Academy. Derek Goldschmidt earned top marks in two college courses that he took this summer at Cincinnati State. He is currently enrolled in two additional college courses for the fall semester and plans to continue to take additional college courses throughout his senior year. And he's doing all this while still taking his traditional high school classes. So he is definitely a very motivated young man who will probably do great things in the future. Next, we will move to Taylor Elementary. The second-grade students there completed a unit on folktales as part of the newly adopted English Language Charter Program. CKLA is a top-rated program that is aligned to the research of the science of reading. The Tigers were fully engaged in this learning opportunity. And as a culmination of the unit, students and staff dressed as characters from the folktales. The unit was thoroughly enjoyed by the students and staff alike. So a fun way to learn, that's for sure. White Oak Middle School is proud to celebrate their first Warriors of the 24-25 school year. The students were chosen for this recognition due to their exemplary behavior and academic achievement. These students will celebrate with a pizza party with the principal on 9/27. And they would like to extend a thank you to United Methodist, or Monfort Heights United Methodist Church, who sponsors this activity every month for them. Next, we will move on to athletics. And Northwest High School would like to recognize junior golfer Ryan Lopez-Sandoval. Ryan is also a member of the JV soccer team and is balancing two false words as well. He is, he is doing all of this while maintaining a strong student performance as well. He also helped his team, lead his team to a second-place finish against Wyoming. And the other student Northwest would like to recognize is senior cross-country runner Kevin Villanos Gonzalez. Kevin joined the cross-country team to help prepare for his spring 800-meter track and field event. At the Lebanon Invitational, he was the fastest knight in his inaugural 5K run. So hopefully he'll have just as great of a year for the track and field team. Next, we'll go to Corrine High School. And they would like to recognize senior golfer Alex Diesel for his sixth-place finish at the Best of the West event. He scored a 76 and finished ahead of 112 other contenders. And hopefully his fine golf skills may get him a college scholarship. And our last area is citizenship. And Struble Elementary students showed their Struble and Cardinal pride at the pep assembly. Coach Huber was impressed with how quickly the students went to Level Zero, which is the no-talking level. They showed attendance to the speaker and interest in the speaker. Students have worked hard from day one of the school year to learn the Blue Jay, Blue Jay way. And the students are working hard to follow school expectations in all environments to get to the business of learning right away. So it sounds like we're off to a very good start. And hopefully we continue to grow on the skills we've already are working on and continue to have a good academic performance in interesting and innovative learning programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other bottom-up ideas?
No, that's all we had was with John's presentation.
Any legislative update, Chris?
Nicole, the legislature is out.
I'd just like to hear you say that.
But I've been trying. I Googled three times since our last meeting to see how many vouchers. Last year was 135,000. To see what this year's are, and they haven't released the numbers yet, so we'll see.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, we do have some employees here tonight who wish to speak. So Human Resources invited a couple of our new staff who are new to the district to share some of their experience. So I know it's been a long meeting so far. Sheena, is Sheena still here? Sheena, thank you. Intervention specialist at Monfort Heights can share about her experience joining the district.
So thank you, everyone, for having me here. I'm Sheena Miller. I'm a new hire at Monfort Heights Elementary. I'm a fifth-grade intervention specialist. I feel so welcome within Northwest community. The building administration, teaching staff just welcomed me as part of their community, shared a lot of resources, extended a welcome hand, and just made me feel like I was part of their school. And one thing that I've enjoyed being part of Northwest is just the whole collaboration piece. And working with my team of teachers and other teachers and staff in the building and working on the goals, looking at instruction, attendance, and behavior, and how we can support our students to be their best selves. And so for me, just being part of Northwest has just shown me how, being now going into my 13th year of education, it's like, just makes me feel just so wanted and so needed as a teacher and makes me feel that, again, I can be that resource and support for everyone, not just for the parents with the students, but the community members as well as the teachers and staff at Monfort Heights. So I just wanted to speak really briefly, and thank you for giving me your time and giving me the floor.
Thank you, Sheena. Welcome.
Then we have our new French teacher from Northwest High School, Binto.
Bonjour. Bonsoir. Good evening, everyone. My name is Binto Youngan. I'm the new French teacher at Northwest High School. And just like she said, I wanted to be here tonight to say thank you for the warm welcome that I received from Northwest, our local community, the administration, the teachers, my, my students. It's been an amazing experience so far. And actually, being here tonight makes me even more grateful because from hearing the Transportation Department, thank you again for all your hard work, like, we have no idea as a teacher. And tonight made me realize that it really is a teamwork that, and that, that feeling that I had from the very beginning when I had talked to Mr. Gaines, the Assistant Principal, that hired me, and Susan, everyone, I've been so caring. And that's why I'm, I'm a person that cares, and that's the reason why I joined this, our school district, because from top to bottom, everyone cares about the success of the students, the safety of the students. And so now I feel even more pumped to really do my best to make sure that my students are successful. I believe last week, Brenda came into my classroom and like Mr. Yeder emphasized at the beginning of the school year, it's all about knowing your students, knowing their, their name, their strength, and their need. And I think this is the recipe for success. Like, this is something that personally I do every year because my last name is a little bit difficult. And my students are like, "Oh, la, la, Madame Youngan! How are we going to remember your name?" And I'm like, "Guys, this is very simple. My job is to remember every single one of you by the end of the week." And they're like, "Oh, are you going to remember and be able to know every one name?" And I'll say, "Yes, I will." And I made a, a challenge. And I say, "I know your name. You know my name." And, and they do. And I think from the very beginning, they, they understand that I care, that I want them to be successful. I want them to, to be able to reinforce their social skills. You know, learning French is learning a language, but also be able to express yourself. And, and that you can make mistakes, and it's okay also to make mistakes. And I think that once you create that positive, safe environment, the students just are willing to learn. And I believe that's what I'm bringing to the table every day, my, my joy excitement because I care. And learning from the Bartlett Tech, also the department, all the things that are putting in place now and in the future. I'm very excited. Same thing for the transportation. It's, it's, it's a tough job, but they came today with solutions. And I really appreciate that. So I'm excited.
We also have one of our new technicians in our IT department, Randy, who's here to speak as well. So Randy, if you want to come on up.
Hi, thank you, board members, too, for the opportunity, and Susan as well. I appreciate it. My name's Randy Reegseker. I'm one of the new computer technicians that works on the technology support team under Matt Fisher. And, you know, I first want to say that I have a great boss. And I, yeah, he's in the back row. It's a, I've been here since the middle of July, and I, I made a, kind of a career change later in my career. And, you know, one thing I've really enjoyed about working here is, first, I look forward to getting up and coming into work. I find that the people that I work with want to be here. And the teachers work really hard. And what really has struck me, I work at Colrain High School and I work at Struble Elementary. Elementary teachers work really hard. They've got a lot of, of things to get ready at the beginning of the year. What I like about the job is just seeing how technology is used in the classroom. I was excited to see that kindergartners get, get a Chromebook, which is basically a laptop, from the day they start. So the kids are exposed to technology that they're going to need. You know, we were just talking about how we don't, we don't know how, what the job titles are going to be when they graduate. And, and I think just getting them exposed to this is, is wonderful. And I enjoy being on the front line of that, working with the teachers and then the students and the staff. I also find that it's, it's a great team. It's a, it's the environment we have, really, we work together, and I, I appreciate that. And, you know, the other thing is, I want to, you know, kind of end with a story here. I was setting up a smart board last week in the, in the elementary school, and a fourth grader walks by, I'm kind of drawing on it. He walks by and says, "Man, you really get to work with some cool stuff." And I said, "Yeah, yeah, I do." So I want to thank you for the opportunity to work for the district and appreciate this time.
Thank you.
Then we also have Bob Engel from Tech, Transportation, who's going to speak.
Board members and administration. I know I'm supposed to be retired, but...
Glad you're not.
I own this too long to, to watch. To watch the suffering. So I've been driving almost every day. And the reason I drive is those two right there. To watch the hours that they put in is just unbelievable. And what they do to cover routes. So that's why I come in every day. But I'm going to give you the Reader's Digest version because we've been beating this horse all night. There's reasons that's hard to drive, to find drivers. And one of them is, is student behavior. And that's a whole nother topic. That, that should be a summit between principals and whoever handles busing at those schools. And these two, Yolanda, and I would sit in on it because I watched two administrators take a stack of bus write-ups this thick at their middle school every year. And with one year, it was that thick. And all it took was consistency. It was the matter of, this is the rule, you broke it, this is your consequence. And once they find out that there's no games, then it stops. But that's something different. But one, one of the things I want to talk about, and this is one of the problems we have when we're hiring, is a lot of times, when we're hiring and we're sitting across the table and those people find out that they're not going to get a paycheck for one month after they start working. It becomes a problem for them because they can't pay their electric bill, their wire bill, feed their family. And we had a $1,000 sign-in bonus, which I think we should put back in. And the way to handle that would be that, that paycheck that they wouldn't get after two weeks, they would get their first 500 of that $1,000. The other 500 would be predicated on them staying for the rest of the year and their attendance going to the end of the year. So those two factors would be whether they would get the, the other $500. And we need 10 bus drivers. $10,000, you guys know what the budget is. That is not even a blink. Okay? And like I said, I want to keep this short. The other, the other thing I wanted to talk about real quick was technology, which we're talking about communication. And we've added new bus cameras. We have the tracking programs. We have bus tablets. We have all these different things that we've put in. Those three people cannot administrate that. There has to be a full-time technology person in that department to handle all this. Now, you're going to use that person for other resources because that person should also be routing. Because part of the technology, this whole tracking students, everything else, all this is predicated on the information being crystal clear and perfect in that the tablet doesn't work. It won't help the driver if it's telling it that it's got to turn around and go back somewhere because one little dot on that map was on the other side of the street instead of on this side of the street. It'll tell you to turn around because it thought you were picking the kid up on this side of the street and not that side of the street. So that all has to be corrected. These guys ain't got time to sit down and correct all that. That's what that person could do for you, to make sure that your technology is correct. So that's my suggestion. These guys are working 14 hours a day. It's ridiculous. We got to do something so that they can have a life again. And that's, I think that person would be huge in getting these people back to their life and not worrying about transportation 24/7. So those are my two little ideas that I got. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's it for the employee organizations.
Thank you. We have two community comments. Just a reminder that unlike the employee speaking during community comments, each person is allowed three minutes and that the board and administration, administration cannot answer questions during that time, but we can take your information and get back to you. And first, we have Cheryl Cooper. Hi, Cheryl.
Can I thank them really quick? I'm sorry? I just wanted to say thank you to them really quick. My daughter is a senior. She hasn't been on a bus in seven years. But Ms. Terry, with her bus driver, she was amazing all five years. So thank you. Go ahead. Okay, so hello, guys. As you all know, my name is Cheryl Cooper. I come to you today concerned, as a concerned mother of a student in the district, a taxpayer, and a previous volunteer coach. As you all know, last year, I organized and coached the Colrain High School dance team. After questioning the blatant discrimination towards the team, for months, myself and two other parents, one with no affiliation to the team, met with Superintendent Yater on Thursday, October 12, 2023, to address the discrimination, senior night, and why a dance coach had been paid for three years while a dance team did not exist. We were told by Superintendent Yater that this would be checked into. The next week, I was terminated as a coach by Superintendent Yater and never heard back about the money. After being let go, we were told that the school needed to open the position to someone within the district as the team would now be under the school's umbrella. No one from this district or community was hired. The school hired a coach with no previous experience, no ties to our community, and who was not dedicated to the children. My concern is the decisions being made on who to hire, on who's hired to lead and teach our children. This coach did not show up for months after being hired. In fact, the children performed at a game and a talent show with no coach present or working with them. She did not officially begin working with students until this school year, taking away opportunities and funds from over 20 dancers last year. This coach has already resigned. On her day of resignation, she did not wait 30 minutes before beginning to harass parents of the team, students, and previous coaches. She called one parent over 20 times in less than an hour. She posted negative posts and videos of adults and children. And while still employed by the district, she harassed... And while still employed by the district, she harassed the previous coaches that she had no interaction with. She mistreated the children, left the children unattended several times, and they stopped volunteering and growing their resumes under her leadership. She was still permitted to, to stay until she resigned. She was not terminated. This woman, who I've never met a day in my life, yet I have an active restraining order against her. I had to stand in an open court and state the only reason that I know of her is from being a Colrain High School dance coach. I also plan to follow up with a civil suit. This woman was chosen not due to credentials or experience, but out of spite and pride. This should not be how we choose who lead our children. This woman was chosen over a coach who owned and coached an all-star cheer and dance team and had multiple national winning titles under her belt and has been an active member of this community for the past 13 years. When you ask to lock our children's phones up, when you ask us to pay more in taxes, when you ask us to trust this district, when you ask why people are pulling their children, why alumni don't return, we as parents just ask you to be fair and transparent. To take a second and look at who you are hiring, we ask you to put your pride aside and our children's safety and futures first.
Thank you. And next, we have Dexter Carpenter.
Hello. First of all, I'm a renewed employee. I don't, you timed me? Oh, okay.
I didn't start it.
Okay, okay. I'm a new, retired and rehired. And I want to thank, the security thing is really working out. And I want to say this real quick, I know you're going to zap me. But I, the staff over there, the principal and assistant principal and the athletic director, these people are phenomenal. I probably would have never left the district, go to public school if those guys, that principal was, wow, he's unreal. And so it gets to the point what I want to make here. My wife's here with me today to support. Since I've been here, you well know that I'm a world champion in wrestling. I'm Hall of Fame over there at Northwest High School. And they named the wrestling room after me in the Catholic school that I was just retired from and came back to do security for you guys. Here's the deal. I was the advocate of bringing young ladies into the wrestling room with the boys. And back in the time, Mr. Densel and them, like, ooh, I don't know about that. But I did, I had girls that were All-American and everything, but they had to wrestle against the boys. Things have changed. I would be the first to tell you, it would not, it's not a wise idea to have the boys and girls teams together. I had, I'm going to hand this to you real quick.
Thank you.
The principal and, and the athletic director have got with me and they asked me to start a girls' wrestling team there.
This is the girls who've signed up?
Yes, these are the girls that signed up. That's their names and their ID number and, and their weight. Please don't share the weights, the girls. The girls, the girls were a little sensitive. And when I asked for their weights, they kind of gave me that sad look. What was really beautiful, the principal pulled everyone out, asked anyone that was interested in being in girls' wrestling. 60 girls came down, 45 signed up. Now, I, I, let me try to be humble, Mr. Densel. I, I'm, I seem to be the best at coaching girls. I've had two girls take second in the state. I took one girl who had, all of them had never wrestled before. We can save these young ladies' lives. But we are going to, I need, I really need the board to help me with this. We got to separate the girls from the boys. Now, the principal has given, allowed me to find a room. We have the mats. We can be totally separate. Most of the young ladies said they wouldn't feel comfortable with, you know, boys touching them and et cetera, et cetera. And to be honest with you, Mr. Densel, no, I was the one who brought them in the room with boys. I would tell you right now that in this time and day, it's just not appropriate. And even with my magic, I don't think I could keep them from doing something inappropriate. And plus, it kills the spirit in developing the young ladies. I did it at the Catholic school. They were shocked that I was able to get it done. But I'm telling you right now, with you guys' help and Mr. Yater's help, I can pull this off. I can really pull it, I just need a little, some things, I don't know, you know. I'm a security guy and a custodian. I have some administrative stuff, you guys know. And Mr. or my, Mr. Johnson just needs help helping me do this, you know. We'll be totally separate from the boys. We have our own room. They let me find a room. And all I got to do is dunk the room and find a place to dunk in, which I'll do, you know. I was a custodian first. But anyway, and I just need y'all help with all the little administrative stuff to pull it off. And I'll get it done. I'll do all the work and everything. And I'm willing to take a hit, whatever. It's not about the money or anything. I do need assistance. And I'm, maybe to hire a female assistant who wrestled, or I'm going to hire a teacher, female, to be with me. Because these are, it's still new for me, coming back is new, these kids are new. But if you guys help me out on this, I can pull this off. I can make the, and these young ladies are charged. One young lady took the time and drew up how the uniforms are going to look. They'll be two-piece. For those of us who are Christians, the uniform is very appropriate. You know, I'm from the singlet day. Mr. Densel will tell you, I walk in there hard. But, but now, the outfit is a two-piece outfit. They'll look nice and everything. There are three young ladies from Colrain that don't feel comfortable being in the boys' room. The boys didn't do anything, but they just would like, if we get to pull it off under the state rule, OSHA, if they stay under seven, they can practice with us legally without being a scrimmage. If you guys help me pull this off, you'll, you'll be glad. We'll be off the hook. Thank you.
I'll take it.
So Darrell, what, what do we have to do to help Dexter?
This is the first time I'm hearing this. We'll work on it. I'll get with him.
All right.
All right, so moving on to the consent items. We'll start with human resources.
We seek approval for the following: three resignations, one retirement, one change in status, four initial appointments, various supplemental items.
We have vendor contracts for non-public schools and student services. We also have two donations. The Greater Cincinnati Foundation donated funds to purchase items to create sensory and calming space at Pleasant Run Middle School. And the Ohio School Public Relations donated a gift card to the district.
With that, Superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent items as listed.
Second. Any questions on any of these? Pass this five to zero. Thank you.
So for our fiscal consent items this month, we have the, this month was reading of and approved the regular board meeting minutes from September the 9th. We have our financial report for the month of August. We're at $111 million for all funds balance. Our general fund unreserved balance is $31 million. Our revenues for the month of, year-to-date through August is $36.4 million or at 32% because we've already received our second half taxes. We get our taxes twice a year. And our expenditures are at $15 million or about 15% through the year. So if you're looking, about 7%, 8% per month, we're right on target. Our investment weighted average return is 4.83%. Just as the feds go to reduce our interest rate, we top out. So we'll probably start seeing that coming back down with our laddered investments. And our list of monthly bills, we have our routine monthly bills as well as, beginning of the school year, we have our student-staff software, some severance payments, technology and textbooks per our replacement plans, insurance, testing, fall officials, the Colrain High School sewer line and utility service easement, the steamer at Northwest High School, and some auxiliary and grant fund payments. And finally, we have, we need to accept, approve, and appropriate three grants. The Colrain High School has received the Children's Theater grant again this year as well as some PBIS incentives. And the Pleasant Run Middle School has the calming space grant that they've received. So with that, I ask the board to approve the fiscal consent items as listed.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Pass this five to zero. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you. So next, we have the tax incentive financing agreements with Colrain Township. We have four commercial TIFs. They include the Staberman Farm, the Wyler Kia, and the Two Wawas. Though, we're sent for your information. So with that, I ask the board to approve the four TIF agreements as listed.
Two Wawas?
Yeah. Banning it.
Two Wawas.
For Colrain. I need a motion in a second.
To move.
Second.
Any questions?
I've got some concerns about the Wawa. Wawas, they're mainly, they're based in eastern Pennsylvania. And my impression was it was a hangout that necessitated having an armed guard. And I, just, in Colrain Township is, in Wyler, maybe by the old bowling alley, the Wawa up there, actually where the two, other places were. There was the one over here, and then the one out there where Fly was, out there, Colrain and Struble. And I, I mean, I'm speaking from my own personal experience. I'm just questioning if that's something that the township needs.
Well, didn't the township trustees, didn't they vote to let them build?
That doesn't mean. I mean, I, I just personally have Facebook and things to urge them not to. Again, it's from numerous visits because I, it's in eastern Pennsylvania. I hope I'm wrong. It turns out to be a cool place. You've never been in a gas station and it's armed guards?
Don't think I have either.
Thank you. Chris just needs a minute. Four to one. Thank you.
Next, our Pleasant Run Middle School needs to increase their change fund from $200 to $400. So with that, I ask the board to approve increasing the Pleasant Run Middle School's change fund so that they can have change for tournaments.
Second.
Mark. Any questions there? Pass this five to zero.
And finally, the Ohio Revised Code requires that we pass a permanent appropriation resolution prior to October 1st each year. And this is what our May temporary appropriations, we take the budgets that were approved last year as well as making sure we stay within our 3% community partnership. So with that, I ask the board to approve our fiscal year '25 permanent appropriation resolution for $160 million, all funds.
Second.
Any questions for Amy? Five to zero. Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
We have a textbook adoption for information-only this time. It is for a newcomer English class at the high schools. And so this will be on for approval at the next meeting.
Thank you.
And then just a couple of updates for tonight. Obviously, we sent out notification after the last board meeting about the report card. And we'll have more information coming up at the State of the District. But we did have some exciting changes with going up a star as a district for gap closing and for our early literacy. And then we do have all of our schools that are moving up to a three-star or more for schools. And we had a reduction in the number of twos that were across all of our report card. That was one of our focus areas from last year into this year, was to move everything from a two to a three. And we reduced the number of twos on our report cards across the entire system by about half, so, or more than half. So we'll have more information at the State of the District about that. And then we'll have a work session coming up where we'll dig into the details of the individual report cards and the district report card. But some exciting news that we're seeing, some things trending in the right direction. We also had three teachers that I want to call out. We had Doug Ficker from Northwest High School. He's a social studies teacher. He was our local 12 educator of the week this week. We had a Warm 98 teacher of the week, Michelle Carty from Taylor. And we had a Struble teacher, Katie Triantos, who was chosen as the county-wide TNPTA award winner for all of the region. So we're excited for her to be the Hamilton County winner of the TNPTA. So some exciting news from our teachers who are being recognized for the work that they're doing.
Awesome. Thank you. Anything else? Chris, any comment?
Just briefly, Nicole, went to the Northwest homecoming parade game. And the parade up there is always so much fun, other than like, my Reese Cubs holding a light bag. Creating absolute bats. My poor kids. But it was great and Northwest won their game. So good evening. Appreciate all the effort Northwest put in here.
I just want to thank John Graff for his presentation. Just everything that's going on at Butler Tech, there's just, there's going to be a lot of opportunities for our kids in our district to take advantage of, you know, the, the new buildings and the, just the different classes you can take. It's just a great situation. I want to thank the bus department and for the presentation. Just, it's, it's not easy running a transportation department. And the parents, the public, they just don't get it. They just expect a bus to show up. And when you don't have enough drivers, you got to cancel routes. And it's just, and, and I've seen this, I mean, I've been all over the country. And it seems like every city we're in, you can go by a school district and there's bus drivers needed everywhere across the country. And it's just, it's just, it's not our district problem. It's a problem through the United States. And it's just, we do, we do a great job, the bus department does a great job just doing what they can. And hopefully, we can get enough bus drivers so we don't have to cancel routes. And then I want to thank Dexter for coming and talking. Hopefully, we can help him out on that. And Darrell, the three teachers you just not told us about, just congratulations to those guys.
Yeah, I just want to say, I hope Butler Tech keeps churning out these medical professionals because they're certainly needed in the medical field. Also, the transportation department, what an excellent presentation. Hopefully, people have listened to it or will watch it online because I think there's just a lot of misunderstanding. Obviously, you people are very dedicated to your job, dedicated to the students. But it seems like it's much easier to just put a nasty remark on social media than to try and understand the problem. So I'm glad you came and presented that. Obviously, your bus drivers have utmost respect for you and are really, really want work for you and want you to have a good work-life too. And thank you also over here for your suggestions about things that could help, help the, the transportation department. I think that was wonderful. And I would think if I were a parent and I know there's a manpower shortage, I would make sure I had a backup plan. Just as you have to have for school days, if you got to go to work and you have to have somebody watch your kids, maybe have a backup plan. Hopefully, this stops when we get more hires. But have a backup plan so the morning's not stressful and you're already in a bad mood before anybody walks out the door. And I also want to congratulate those teachers. I think that's a wonderful accomplishment and recognition.
Action-packed meeting tonight. Thank you for, John, it's amazing really just how Butler Tech is, well, one, well-funded, that they can, they can do all this. But I mean, the kids coming out with a college degree is amazing. Brian, thank you for you and your team. It's good for us to hear because we don't hear everything. Usually, the only thing we hear is people complain. So it's good to know kind of the infrastructure and what's going on so that we can be a solution somehow. I always like when the kids present. That's what we're here for, is for them. And hopefully, we get some resolution for transportation. We'll see what we can do.
Just again, reiterate what everyone said. Thank you guys, you know, thank you, Bob, for your perspective and speaking. Even just Friday night, the bus drivers are driving kids back and forth for the parade, you know. So it never stops, weekends, just all year. So just really appreciate your department and everything that you guys are doing. Thanks Cheryl and Dexter for coming to speak and our students. And congratulate the teachers that recently won awards, so.
that recently won awards, so.
With that, we'll go into executive session. Superintendent recommends that we approve executive session to conference with an attorney concerning disputes that are subject to pending or imminent court action. The superintendent recommends the board approve the action as listed.
Second.
Chris and Jim. Just a reminder, when we go to executive session, when we return, it will be just to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, and the Bengals leading seven to none.